Here.
Mr. Burke?
Yeah.
Ms. Costa?
Here.
Ms. Kepiscus?
Here.
Mr. Leclerc?
Here.
Okay, I will now accept...
Yes.
I will now accept nominations for Chairperson of the Windsocket School Committee. Are there any further... are there any nominations?
I nominate Mr. Paul Bourget.
Can you accept second?
Second.
I accept.
I declare nominations...
You have to ask, are there any other candidates?
Are there any other candidates? Are there any other nominations? Okay, hearing none, I declare the nominations closed. Roll call to approve Paul Bourget as the Chair... Chairman of the Windsocket School Committee. Mr. Bourget?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Ms. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Due to my voice issue today, I will just handle this next item and then we will... I'll have the Vice Chair continue with the meeting. I make a motion to nominate for Vice Chairman Donald G. Burke.
Second.
Second.
There are any other nominations? I declare the nominations for Vice Chair closed. Dr. McGee roll call.
Chairman Bourget?
Yes.
Mr. Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Ms. Costa?
Of course.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Why don't we stand for a moment of silence and the pledge, please? I pledge allegiance...
To the flag of the United States of America...
And to the republic for which it stands.
One nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you want to take it over, Donald?
Sure, sure. You know, the word "vice" is sometimes seen as an opposite to virtue, but vice also means in place of. So tonight, I will be the voice in place of Mr. Bourget.
Thank God.
Second, Matt.
Are we sure we don't want Ms. Kepiscus to do it?
The most Christmas present speaks.
Only difference is Mr. Bourget speaks with a French Windsocket accent and I unfortunately speak with a Irish Catholic Boston accent. Okay, enough said. Our first item on the agenda is our good and welfare. And tonight, we have Globe Park Elementary School, which is making a presentation. Michelle Kennel, Globe Park Principal, will go first. And then we will move to public comment, if necessary.
I would like to first apologize. It was pajama day at school, so you're lucky I went home and put clothes on. So what I prepared today for our presentation is the district has spent a lot of resources and time around academic teaming and the idea of collaboration in every classroom with students' problem solving. So I spent some time in one of my self-contained classrooms, one of my intermediate self-contained classrooms. And I have a video of snippets of the progression of the lesson from front-loading vocabulary to the debrief at the end about what you liked and what you didn't like. So you're going to see all the little steps along the way. And I hope you like what you see. A couple of the kiddos, you know, will struggle when they speak. I left them in there because they really... They just prove that you set a high standard, they'll meet it. And I was very proud of their performance. So I hope you enjoy it. Yeah, I don't know if you're going to watch it here, if you're going to watch it here.
Well, we have to go down.
I'm not sure.
We'll come down.
So we'll move down.
Yep.
Can you see it all?
I'll be fine. No, it's on those.
It was on there, yeah.
I don't know how to lower it or I would.
When you're engineering, I don't know that word. What else do we need to think about? Oh, they see, they see, they see, they see the front of the... How it's going to stand going across, right? Because remember, I said it has to go between two desks. So this middle part, can that be heavy? Why not, Katia? What's going to happen if my middle is heavy? What's going to... what's going to happen to the bridge? Right, because when he goes walking across it, if the middle's too heavy, it's going to fall down and break into the river. Right, so when you're engineering, I don't know that word. That's what engineers do, guys, when engineers... When you're engineering your bridge, okay? Think about it. Imagine if a car was driving across it, okay? And if it's too heavy and runs by, it's going to break because then something goes over it. So you've got to think, you've got to adjust the right amount of stuff in order to be able to get across.
There's a little bit more.
So when you're engineering, I don't know that word. That's what engineers do, guys, when engineers... Ready. What are you working today?
Sorry, I just hit loops, so we won't have to click between them.
Ready. What are you working today?
To solve the problem?
Yeah, you told me. And there we go, say it again.
We were... You were doing this, right? Like, you said you changed it.
What was your original idea? What was it? What did you... what did you change about that idea?
I changed it because that seemed like too much.
Okay. Ready. What are you working today?
If we like, put these... So we like... We want to... Put out... And then we put out... We put up our lunch. And then we throw it here. This thing like a...
Right here. This word... All right, so here it goes. That looks... It's a Japanese. That looks good, man. All right, so here it goes. This is our gingerbread. That was just too much. You think it's going to fall?
Yeah. No, I think that's worse. No, I think that's worse. It would work. Not really good.
All right, let's see. All right, so now this is the one with the... It's a maple, a little heavier.
Well, this is...
It's not convincing. Defending. It's hard to... All right, let's try. And sanitizer. Little here. Let's see positive.
I wouldn't use it.
It's many, many... It's not bad.
Yeah.
All right, this one has to be on the back. Come on, he's going to take a nap on it. It worked. That's really good. You guys succeeded.
Now they're doing a little debrief because some, of course, worked and some did not. So now they're meeting back to ask what they liked or what they noticed about others in comparison to their own.
All right, so let's take a look at our engineering that we did today, okay? We're looking at these structures, okay? Raising your hand, what worked and what didn't work? What worked for your project? What worked for somebody else's project that you noticed? Giovanni?
The one next door.
These two?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm looking how they... Might be saying things as... They put levels on the bottom. And they... And they... Because they...
So there you have one of our intermediate self-contains moving through the entire process of what we envisioned, you know, good teaching practice. I hope you enjoyed it.
Here we go. Like the Wizard of Oz, what's behind the screen?
What shall appear?
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Kennel, for the presentation. And it's good to see the students building bridges amongst each other. What a nice idea. At this moment now, we're going to move to public comment. Public good and welfare comment. If anyone would like to speak to the school committee here, please come to the podium, give us your name and address. Ask you to stay within the courtroom and also no more than five minutes.
I promise it won't be more than five minutes. Donna Codere, I'm the principal at Leo Savoy Elementary School, 990 Menden Road, Windsocket. I just wanted to thank a few people publicly. I don't know if any... if everyone's aware, but we had six families affected by a fire at Rock Ridge last week or two weeks ago now. And I just want to publicly thank Allison Boulay from the high school and local 1137 Good Shepherd Catholic Schools and Knott Smithville Elementary School, who all reached out to me the same day to make donations and start planning to provide help to the families. Of course, many of the staff and families at our local elementary schools have also called. Some of our families can't get in yet, so we don't have any place to put anything. So I told them to hold off till after the holidays. But we were able to give them gift cards and food and immediate necessities. And then after the holidays, a lot of them need new bedroom sets because the second floor on most of the apartments, if they weren't burnt out, they were... They were, I don't know what you call it, watered out, water damage. So I just really wanted to publicly thank... Because it's a tough time of year to have something like that. It's a tough time for it ever to happen, but especially during the holidays. So that's all, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak, public good and welfare? Okay, seeing none, hearing none. Okay, now, if you noticed on the agenda, we have a special celebration right now in honor of the holidays that we will be celebrating this weekend and the holidays that are being celebrated this weekend and also the vacation that shall begin for our students tomorrow and our faculty tomorrow. Windsocket Area Career and Technical Center has worked overtime for us today. And we're going to have a little five-minute recess to enjoy some treats. I didn't... I didn't... When I came in, the treats were covered by a blanket. So I don't know what they are, but it'll be a nice surprise to find out. So we will take a recess.
Make a motion.
Take a motion. Motion is made by Mr. Bourget.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leclerc and Mrs. Costa. At 7:19. Do we need a vote? Okay, roll call.
Chairman Bourget?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Ms. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Ms. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
Okay, we will take a five-minute recess. Generally, it's more than five minutes. Okay, not bad.
Excellent.
Bring you something?
What is that dressing? That dressing is good.
All right. Okay, thank you, students and Chef Paul for a great little treat. I hope you all now enjoy your winter vacation that begins tomorrow. I'm gonna make a motion out to come out of recess at 7:31.
Second.
Second.
Motion made second by Chairman Borgia and Ms. Costa. Roll call vote, Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borgia.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes. Thank you. We're back into the meeting. And my apologies to Dave Richards for the 10 minutes of dead air time that he has told me happens when we have these recesses, so. Okay. Motion for recognitions and announcements now for superintendent.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. So I want to start by recognizing the wonderful Globe Park students that we saw on the video as well as their teacher and Mrs. Kennel, the principal of Globe Park. It's just an example that we saw, a great example this evening of students' problem solving and thinking critically in their classes. And that kind of work is typical of what you see across the district in our classrooms. So I want to thank them for doing a wonderful job in representing Globe Park Elementary School. I secondly want to thank, and they're here, you just recognize them, Vice Chair Burke, the incredible Windsocket Area Career and Technical Center culinary students. I'd like to give them another round of applause. And I'd like to recognize Chef Paul, who's in the back there with them as well. Great job, chef. Great job, students. Really excited. As everybody knows, we have an amazing culinary program at the Windsocket Area Career and Technical Center. And I'm really excited. I'm gonna kind of announce it before it's officially announced, but we just found out yesterday that the Career Center is one of 13 Career Centers and CTE programs across the state. They're gonna be receiving $125,000 through the Department of Education for a food truck. So we're gonna be starting that process. Yes, let's give it a round of applause. So this amazing food that we were able to eat this evening is gonna be trucking around the city and trucking around the state for a long time. So we're really excited about that. We're excited to work with with our amazing students, not just our culinary students, but we have students in other programs at the Career Center that'll be a part of this process as well. So because we're gonna be having our automotive students, they'll be, you know, working on the on the food truck when necessary. We have our graphics program, which will be working on the design of the truck. We have our digital media and P-Tech students that can potentially create menu apps for our food trucks. So we're really excited about this opportunity. And shortly after the first of the year, I'll be announcing it publicly formally as Ride gets a little bit more details out to the to the community. So again, really excited about that. So thank you to those amazing students and the wonderful cuisine that they that they put together for us. Next, I want to announce, I'm pleased to introduce, although she was unable to make it this evening, Ms. Karen Cahill as a new principal for Kevin K. Coleman Elementary School. Ms. Cahill joins us with over 35 years of experience, 12 of those as an urban elementary principal. Most recently, she worked as an elementary principal for the Boston Public Schools. You'll appreciate that, Mr. Burke, bringing a Boston person in. While working at the Boston Public Schools, she served as a teacher, curriculum coach, assistant principal, and director of recruitment. She earned her master's degree in education administration from Framingham State College, her bachelor's degree in elementary and special education from Eastern New Mexico University, where she also learned and was able to practice speaking Spanish daily. As an administrator, she found her passion in life working with diverse urban schools. She believes in finding the success and well-being of each student and working hard to reflect student achievement at every school she has led. Based on her record of accomplishments, I highly recommend Ms. Karen Cahill for the position of principal at Coleman Elementary School.
That's great.
And unfortunately, she couldn't be here this evening, but she will be starting when we come back from our holiday break.
Awesome.
Yes, break.
Tasting the food over there, huh?
That's right, yes. The Windsocket High School Holiday Concert was held on December 8th. I want to recognize our wonderful high school musicians, concert band, jazz band, chorus, and the drum line. I know some of us here were in attendance, and the high school music department once again did not disappoint. It was a wonderful performance. So I want to thank those musicians at Windsocket High School. The Main Street Holiday Stroll was held on December 15th. Seven elementary schools and our middle schools decorated trees there. And I think Mrs. Kader is sitting out in the audience. Congratulations to Mrs. Kader and Savoy on winning the tree decorating contest.
Yeah, woo!
Is that two years in a row? Is that two years in a row, Donna? It is. Well, it's turning into a dynasty, so. Congratulations. Lastly, Windsocket High School student athlete sophomore Dylan Calori, who is an offensive guard and defensive tackle for the Windsocket High School football team, will play against some of the nation's top high school players in the annual All-American Bowl on December 22nd at AT&amp;T Stadium, which is the home of the NFL's Dallas Cowboys in Texas.
That is awesome.
He was selected for the All-American Bowl while attending the Bryant University Football Camp this past summer. He will take part in a four-day event that includes on-field training sessions, recruiting seminars, position leadership training, and the bowl game. In the classroom, Dylan is a high honors student who takes advanced placement classes and currently owns a 4.3 GPA. We are all so proud of Dylan and look forward to hearing more about his success at the All-American Bowl. Congratulations, Dylan, and good luck to you. And lastly, I would just want to wish everyone a very happy holiday season, a very safe and restful vacation. Today was our last day of school. Tomorrow's the first day of vacation. We will return to classes on Tuesday, January 3rd. So again, I want to wish everyone out there, all of our students and their families and our teachers and staff and administrators, a very happy holiday season. With that, Mr. Vice Chair, that concludes my announcements and recognitions.
Okay, thank you, Dr. McGee. I do have two comments I'd like to make before we move on. First of all, as we name a new principal for the Coleman School, don't you, shouldn't you thank the young man who has been holding the fort?
No, that's true, yes.
For most of this year and who oftentimes holds the fort at many, many schools for us as an acting principal.
That's, you are correct, yeah. Mr. Richard Zagrodny, Dick Zagrodny, who is, he's saved us a lot over the years. And when I say saved us, he's come in to serve as interim acting principal, assistant principal, you name it. And Dick is a former educator of more than 30 years here in the Windsocket Education Board. I had the pleasure of starting my career working with him in Fairmount, you know, 34 years ago. And he is a wonderful educator. He's a wonderful administrator, but most importantly, he's a wonderful person. And I want to thank him for continuing to provide support to our students and our staff and our families here in Windsocket, even as a retired educator. So thank you, Dick, and we look forward to continue working with you in the future, which we probably will. So, but yes, Mr. Burke, thank you for saying that.
I know, I feel so bad. Maybe he can finally retire, you know?
Yes.
Also, my wife and I attended the Main Street Holiday Stroll, and we enjoyed the Christmas trees from the students, but also we got to hear the many, many singing voices of the Villanova chorus that sang at the stroll too. So that was very good to see that from the middle school, the Villanova school, so, very good. I'd like to make a motion now to receive and place on file the superintendent's recognitions and announcements.
Mr. Burke.
I'm sorry. Before I make that motion, would anyone like to say something about the superintendent's comments?
Yes, I just want to piggyback kind of off of our wonderful students that made us our delicious snacks. I attended a wedding recently, and I just want to say the food wasn't even as good as we just ate here. So hats off to you guys back there. You guys did your thing, and I appreciate it. I look forward to eating more snacks from you guys soon. Also, my wife and kids also attended the Holiday Stroll. It was a beautiful sight. There was a lot of good things there. And yes, Ms. Cordia, your tree was beautiful. Thanks to you and your students and everybody else that participated. It was wonderful. And I just wanted to continue saying that. Thank you.
Ms. Costa, anyone else would like to say anything? Okay, now, I will make a motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's recognition and announcements. Is there a second?
Second.
I didn't hear that. What was it? Okay, second by Chairman Borgia. I had to do that once. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay. We will now move on to the approval of minutes. First of all, motion to approve the November 16th, 2022 closed meeting minutes. I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Are there any corrections? Anyone seize with the minutes? Okay, roll call, Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borgia.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes. I would like to make a motion now to approve the November 16th, 2022 open meeting minutes. I'll make the motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. Again, any corrections need to be made? Okay, good job, Ms. Blaze. All right, roll call vote, Dr. McGee.
Chairman Borgia.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes. I will make a motion now to discuss and approve the consent agenda. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chairman Borgia. Is there any school committee member who would like to take any item from the consent agenda out of order? Nope, seeing none. I will now, I will now ask for a roll call.
Chairman. Chairman Borgia.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes. Okey dokey. Okay, moving on now to communications. We have an interesting presentation of two schools. There'll be a presentation on attendance and anti-bullying plans and activities by Leo Savoy and Vernon Heights Elementary Schools. Mr. DeRozio will be first, and then Ms. Kader.
Good afternoon, good evening, everyone. I'm Rob DeRozio, principal of Vernon Heights Elementary School. Thank you for having me, and Merry Christmas to you all. And tonight, I'm gonna talk just quickly about the attendance. I've got that little thing going on as well here. So I asked Mrs. Cordia to step in for me as vice president, but she said no. So we, it's really important for us. It's not, as I say, us, it's not, it's always a team effort at Vernon. And when we, every Friday morning, we meet as a team, my two social workers, and my behavioral specialists, and we talk about our attendance, we talk about any of the behaviors that are going around the building that we need to address. It's really important because what I've done to make it more streamlined, I made a Google form that allows me, if you can see on page two of the worksheet I gave you, I just gave you that as a snapshot. I can go within seconds into the Google form and see how many times Dr. McGee has been out of school, how many times he's acted up in school, where he's acted up in school, whether it's with the itinerants, it could be with at recess, at lunch, classroom. So I'm able to pinpoint and address that, address it right at that time. To me, that this seems to be the saving grace for us, just because of the time. I don't have to go back to the office and say, okay, Mr. Burke, how many times, and I'm going through, trying to flip through and find out how many incidents he had for the week. But we do this every Friday morning. So with that, the attendance, we do the same type of things. We try to pinpoint who the kids are that are really in need of having the phone call home or a letter home. We're constantly, my social workers are amazing. Between me, Mrs. Kissinberth, and Mrs. Martino, Mrs. Martino, we are constantly contacting families to see what we can do to help them. It's not always about like, I got you, come on, what's going? We always try to find a root cause of what the problem is. Whether the kid doesn't want to come to school, there's got to be a why. We want to know the why. It's really important to build that relationship with our families. So when we do call, it's not always, and we do call on a positive, hey, your son or your daughter's been coming to school, we're so proud of them. And so we keep that relationship going. Some of the things that we do, we plan it out for the year. We have the perfect attendance celebrations, and we're proactive and positive phone calls to our families. And then, of course, the older the kid, we can have that conversation with our kids, like, what's going on? Why, how come you're not coming to school? Many, many times, they'll come back and say, my parents won't get up, or something. It's because of my age of my students. It's a lot of times, it's more of an adult. So we'll address that. And the bullying is, we are a very, we try very hard to be a kind school. We've had a few walkthroughs this year, learning walks, and one thing that always surfaces is it's a very welcoming and kind environment for us, for our students, for our families, and anyone who, if you walked in our building, you would feel the welcoming atmosphere around the building. Again, we try to plan it out for the year. Please forgive my voice. We have a kindness club. We have a kindness tree as you walk into the foyer. We have a kindness tree. If you get caught doing nice, kind things, you get a leaf, and we put it up on the tree. The kids love that. We did the bullying prevention week. We did that back, I think that was in November. In November, we had that with, what was that person's name? Al the Respect Guy. He came in and did a great show. He did two great shows for us. And again, going back to my social workers, we have what they call their lunch bunches. So the kids get to go in there, and they get to sit around the table and have these conversations about bullying or attendance. A lot of things come out that we can address. I mean, the biggest thing is communication and building relationships with our kids and families. I'd welcome any one of you to come up on a Friday morning to sit with us and have that conversation around the table. It's really, it's really impressive how it rolls out.
Good, good. Thank you. Thank you so much.
Hello, everybody. So again, my name's Donna Cordia, and I am the principal at Leo Savoy. I think Rob hit it really on the head when he talks about relationships, because I think a benefit I have, and so does Rob, is that we've been here for a while, so we know our families very well. We know there are siblings that are graduating from high school. We know them. I mean, 11 years at one school, I've had a lot of times the whole family come through. So I kind of recognize right away when something's going on with the family, so that's very helpful. I shared my, I'm not gonna go through everything because it's four days before Christmas, and I'm sure you've heard a lot about attendance, but we kind of set attendance up month by month. It's something that we've worked with Dr. McGee on, where same thing with bullying. We kind of have like a timeline that we follow. So like in the summertime, I will review what attendance records looked like in the past, and I'll try and make sure that I'm really watching those red flags when we open school. At our open house, when we send our open house letters home, when we send our newsletters home every month, when I send messages out, we always try to talk about the importance of attendance. We can't teach them if they're not in front of us. And despite our best efforts, we still have those families that, you know, through COVID, school became arbitrary almost, you know? We begged them to send them, and then we have to send them home or quarantine their classroom. And parents were frustrated, and we were frustrated. But what happens if we don't have the kids coming to school on a regular basis in elementary school, is they think school is optional. And as they get older, they give their parents a more difficult time to go, and then it is optional, and then we're constantly chasing them. We're always trying to come up with new and creative ways to get kids in school and keep them there. And that's by having school be not just a place where they learn, but a place where they feel safe, a place where fun things. We had the best day ever today with our chorus and our dance club and our music teacher. And the kids that came had one of the best days. They left, you know, on cloud nine. left, you know, on cloud nine, they were all happy. But it, it is really difficult, we do attendance awards, we call parents, I used to send letters pretty regularly, but I don't find that works for us as much, personal phone call, a letter seems a little more intimidating or a little easier to dismiss than an actual phone call, and it all comes down to, hey, you know, how can I help, not like Rob said, I got you, so we do all those things, we just gave out for the first trimester over a hundred certificates of either perfect attendance or excellent attendance, because some kids, you know, they do get sick and they only missed one day, or, and we want to recognize that, because that's still good attendance, you know, it's still very good, it might not be perfect, but it's excellent, we take every opportunity to recognize, you know, what, them showing up, so when, when you have, when you're bored, you can look at my timeline of attendance, we also meet with our SEL, our social worker, our school psychologist and our behavior interventionist every other Friday morning, and we go over kids at risk, I have a big board in my office and I have it all coded based on discipline, based on attendance, based on academics, so I can look at that board quickly, and I can see, and I'll tell you what, most of the kids who are struggling academically also have a symbol next to their name that says they don't come to school enough, so it, it correlates, you know, and I don't think it's ever going to be an easy. An easy thing to address, it is better, it is better since we're back in school full time, and all we can do is keep plugging along when it comes to that. So it's really hard to hold elementary students accountable when we know they can't get there unless their parents are a part of that solution, so. And anytime, if you come up with any other suggestions that we can use, you know, we really do try to go out of the way to recognize kids who come to school, among other things. We all get attendant works, attendance works, and we get suggestions through them, Dr. McGee shares it with us, and every once in a while, I'll print one of their newsletters and send it out if it has new information or something that I think will catch a parent's eye, so, and then just like, if a student is having trouble academically, we have tiers for attendance and we use different interventions for attendance too. So I'm going to go on to bullying. And just like attendance, we have, we've, we've done a lot of work with bullying, when the kids came back to school from COVID, they really, last year was, if I had another year like last year, I might retire early because it was a tough year, kids not get along with each other, they were not patient with each other, they were not kind to each other, because they had been living in isolation and it was all about them, and they really wanted no part with, no, they wanted nothing to do with making adjustments or anything, and it was a lot of work, and so this year, we came prepared in case it happened again, and it's been a great year, but we always start the year with our anti-bullying pledge, every, every child has to sign it. And the first six weeks of school, I'm going to be honest with you, it, I don't know if you're going to like this or not, but I don't focus on academics as much as routines and systems and making sure that the school is safe and the kids know what the expectations are, whether it's in the classroom, in the library, in the gym, at recess, and we go over and over and over to make sure that they know what the expectations are, it makes for a much smoother school year, so, we also had Al the Raw Guy, we had, we do second step, we've already, we've already been doing it right along, our phys ed and social worker do that weekly to start the school year, we are a full restorative school, so we have a lot of those conversations with kids. You know, every time, every time a kid says something mean to another student, it's not necessarily bullying, you know, in elementary school, they're learning what's socially acceptable, and, and that's something that, you know, we try to teach our parents too, you know, if somebody says, oh, you look ugly today, it's not necessarily that they're trying to be a bully, or I don't like your outfit today, it's our job to teach them that that might hurt someone's feelings, and, and that's where restorative work comes in. We still do have to suspend occasionally, but we try really hard not to, we, you know, so. That's it? Any questions?
Thank you, thank you so much.
Thank you.
You know, I, I sympathize with your frustrations, but I also commend both of you for not giving up, as you said, I mean, obviously, you have to keep working at communications, you keep working at finding ways to correct the problem, so I commend you for that, and I, I, I know that you're frustrated.
It's frustrating, but it's, it is part of the job, you know, it's part of, one of those parts that you just have to do, you know, happy holidays to everybody.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Burke?
Anyone else have any comments? Go ahead, Mrs. Costa.
I, I, correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I'm pretty sure that both of those principals are owed a round of applause as well, because they went from one points to three, if I'm not mistaken, and they were announced on the news for their math and English, I think it was.
They're both three-star schools.
Yes, so they went from a one-star school to a three-star school, so. I just wanted to make sure they get that proper recognition, because both of them, both of their schools went from one to three, so I want to say thank you to them for that, and also. My students, speaking as a parent, my students go to Leo Savoy, and Ms. Kader is right, in the beginning of the year, it wasn't so easy, my kids would come home and ask me if they could fight, because kids were being mean to them, and I, and my, myself and Ms. Kader had a conversation about my, my nephew, because he's not like that, and it takes a lot for him to get upset and angry, and we worked really hard on that, and Ms. Kader, especially recognizing when problems are there, she's very quick with correcting those actions, and my students are very, very happy, today, like she said, they went home and they were on cloud nine, they couldn't stop talking about their day today at school and how much fun it was, so it, it goes a long way, and my nephew now seen another student, somebody was upset, and that student wrote a nice note to the person that was upset, and my nephew seen him do that, and my nephew said, well, I can do that too, so now every time there's a teacher that's upset or another student, my nephew will write them a note of encouragement, I believe Ms. Kader has one hanging in her office, but he will write little notes of encouragement to whoever that student is that is upset, so, like she said, kindness does spread, and it just goes a long way with just little steps that we take as parents to instill it in our children, so I just want to say thank you guys for your hard work, both of you principals over there and every other principal as well, that's come a long way with bullying and dealing with it, it does take a lot of patience, so thank you to you both over there, as well as every other principal in this district.
Great, thank you, Mrs. Costa, anyone else have a comment they'd like to make?
Mr. Vice Chair.
Dr. McGee, go ahead.
I'd love to make a comment, so, tonight, you know, we concluded the presentations with, you know, Mrs. Kader and Mr. DeRozier, letting, you know, the committee and the community know what, what their schools are doing, and, you know, we, we've seen all of the other principals at the podium, talking about what, you know, the proactive measures that they're putting in place with their staff and their support staff, and, and I want to just echo with what Mrs. Costa said, I want to really thank our principals, I want to thank our support staff, I want to thank our teachers, they really work hard to create welcoming, safe environments for our students, for our families and for this community, and they don't have easy jobs.
Sure don't.
But they work extremely hard and they make our kids feel like they belong, and they make our kids feel like they have a school that they can go to, where there are adults and there are other peers there who are like a family, so I think that's something that is special to WinSocket, I really believe that, and they work really hard, and I just want to recognize our principals and our teachers and our staff and our students, because we have great students, we have students that are very compassionate, that are very caring, you know, just the story that you were sharing with us, Mrs. Costa, so again, I want to thank them all for, you know, being true Villanovaans.
Absolutely.
Good comments, excellent, and then thank you all for coming tonight too with your presentations.
And happy holidays.
Happy holidays. Our, our next item is a presentation of the student assessment scores, it's, it'll be led by Dr. Holt and several others.
Yes, thank you, we have a team that will be talking tonight in regards to our accountability measures, the state accountability measures, so I also wanted to echo, and I wanted to make sure we said again to our principals before they left, you'll see later on in the presentation that we talked about the schools, Vernon going from a one to a three-star school, Savoy staying as a three-star school, Vernon becoming out of, coming out of being a CSI school, CSI means comprehensive. Improve, support and improvement, I forgot the acronym for a second, but it's a school that was identified that needed a little bit more support to, to be successful, and Vernon went from a one-star to a three-star, that is amazing work, and it's all due to the dedication of our principals and the staff who are in those buildings, so if you wouldn't mind indulging, one more clap for them, it's amazing.
Absolutely, thank you guys very much.
So on to the hard work now, so we have our RICAS scores, they were released in the beginning of December, as you can see on the first slide, our 2021, 2022 reading proficiency as a district is 11.7 or 12%, that is down 1% from the year before. Our math proficiency is 10.1, up 6% from the year before, those are important statistics, because what we're noticing is that we're following the same trend as the state as a whole, Rhode Island has seen overall a decrease of about 2% in ELA across the state, and an increase of 6.8% in math. Massachusetts also saw the same trend in their MCAS scores, Massachusetts ELA went down about 5%, so it's a bigger dip in their ELA, and their math went up about 6. One of the things that the Commissioner and our team has talked about is that math saw a steady increase, we were back in school, and math during COVID was a much more difficult task than it is when you're in the classrooms, so that's why we're speculating, one of the reasons we're seeing the jump from last year, which had been a very COVID-impacted school year to, so the year before to last year, that, why you're seeing those increases. We also listed for you where each of our schools are currently, and I'd like to draw your attention to the middle column, the yellow column, that column is our, our almost proficient or partially proficient, partially needing proficiency, you'll see that that column has roughly 50%, if you look at some of the different indicators for ELA, that means many of our students are on the cusp of becoming proficient or exceeding proficiency, and the work that we are doing through our high dosage tutoring, through our summer program, through the work that we're doing with the Department of Education through the LEAP grant, which is a grant to support districts that have had a significant impact from COVID, all of this work is to help those students in that yellow bucket become green. Same for math, we're in the same situation for math, and again, the focus as a state has really been to push understandings for math, our district has been partnering with the Rhode Island Department of Education and a company called SchoolKit to work with training our teachers on academic language in math class, so that the, the language isn't the stumbling block for students in math when they're attempting the test. I'll pause there for a second and see if there are any questions about RICAS.
I, to be questions, what time of the school year are these tests taken?
Great question, so it was mid-March to, through April, the end of April, around about that timeframe, it's a window of opportunity for our students to take the test.
So for the last group, the students were in school pretty much full-time?
Correct, so when we get the results, yes, these results are from the spring of '22, yes.
And my, my second question is, do the schools receive a breakdown and analysis of the questions and the answers, and are we able to pinpoint certain areas where they really need improvement?
Yeah, great question, we do actually, we have a platform on, on RICAS portal that allows building principals and their school improvement teams to drill down to individual questions, see how many students got that question correct, what's the standard that question is trying to address, how did you compare, or how did we compare to other students across the state, so we can see the average score or the average, what was most picked, if it was C is the correct answer, how many students picked C, and we can drill down and do item analysis, we also can look at individual students and their scores and drill down individually, so we have MTSS meeting, which, which is multi-tiered support services, or intervention for our students, we can drill right down, and it's actually the driving force behind our school improvement plans, the CSAT plans that we were just talking about, it's what Vernon spent a year, Vernon and Coleman spent a year talking about and focused on, so that they could see improved student performance.
Oh, the final question, so after the analysis, then, some instructional plans are put into place in different classrooms by the teachers?
Correct, yeah, and, and that plan is put together by the team at the school, the school improvement plan team, for instance, one of the things that Coleman did when they looked through their data is that we, our MLL students, our students who speak multiple languages, were struggling with adapting to the, to translinguaging, and Rania and her department went into the school and provided PSYOP training for the teachers, and it is Sheltered Instructional Observation Protocol, it's a universal program for students who have other languages, they know other languages, and it's a support system to help them to be able to translanguage and to acquire English while also learning academics, so you're not doing them in silo, you're doing them together.
Good, thank you.
Yep.
Anyone else have a, a quick question at this moment? Okay, we shall move on to our second part of our presentation.
Yes, I'll do the second part as well, so our second part looks at SATs and PSATs, you can see here that for the 2021, 22, for SAT ELA, we're at 40.3%, and hold on one second, let me just look at my notes here. Here we are, the state was at 47.1, so we were pretty, within about seven points of where the state was, oh, I'm sorry, this is the SAT, 47.1 is SAT, so if you look at the bottom, 22.7. For math, we have for PSATs 12.5% proficiency and for SATs 5.6% proficient, the state is at 25.3. We have a ways to go for high school, our secondary, and working with PSATs and SATs, and we continue to focus on that, as a matter of fact, our next, the next slide on here talks about our schools that were identified for needs, need supports, as we mentioned, Vernon and Coleman have come out of that support structure, but our high school has entered, our high school will be participating in the CSAT process this coming spring, and will be implementing the interventions starting in the fall.
Do we have any questions on the PSAT SAT?
One thing I'd like to note is that we have two buildings in our district, two schools in our district that are three-star schools, that is Savoy Elementary School and Vernon Elementary School, and the rest of our schools are two-star schools, except for the high school, which is a one-star, and are in the CSAT process for next year.
I just have a question about the PSAT SAT.
Yeah.
Are there classes at the high school that directly teach how to take the test?
There are, yes, they do have some preparatory classes, we actually have partnered with, and I can't, I think it's Mastery Prep, I think that's the name of the program, thank you, Dr. McGee, Mastery Prep to offer tutoring on taking the test, so there are programs separate from their traditional class, and the teachers also include it in their, in their instruction.
Because, because it's, it's always been found that districts and towns who have students who can afford tutoring on SAT, PSAT, tend to do better.
Yeah.
Some schools will put in place courses, I, I used to teach an SAT prep course, and, and having those courses helps increase the scores, because it's not just, it's not just the knowledge.
It's test-taking skills, yes, and, and actually, for some students, they take the test multiple times, but the only test score that counts for accountability purposes is the one in the statewide testing day, so if a student has taken it six times before, this one won't necessarily have the same impact for them as, as the ones that they've taken prior to that.
Thank you. Anybody else have a comment, Mrs. Costa? Thank you. Anybody else have a comment? Mrs. Costa?
So I just have a quick question for you. So I know, like, my kids, they're in Leo Savoy, they come home with their math homework and they say, Auntie, I need help. And I look at their math homework and I say, huh? So it's a little bit difficult. Have we put into like, place or maybe thought about like, support groups for parents to maybe understand, to help their kids a little bit more with homework? Because I know I would love to have a place where I could go, I call my best friend because she's great with math and I take a picture of the homework. She lives all the way in Maryland. And I, and I take a picture of the homework and I say, oh, can you help me with this? Because I have, I don't understand it. And for me, when I was in school, I could never get past a number was a letter and a letter was a number. So I could never get past that concept. Now I understand it a little bit more because I'm learning with my kids.
Yeah.
But they're in third grade. I don't remember learning that stuff till I was in like sixth or seventh grade. So like, curriculum has definitely changed a lot since I've been in school. So, and it is a little bit difficult. I want to be able to help my kids, but.
Yeah, solving for X sometimes can be an interesting process. That's a great question. And before COVID, we used to have parent nights when they would come into the school and we would have a math night or ELA night or a reading night and provide just what you were talking about, tips and tricks and strategies to help your student to be able to solve some of the problems. We also have through our Eureka program, something called Homework Helper. And that's like a worksheet that can go home at the beginning of a unit that can assist parents to see what they're doing. I'll also tell you, there are some interesting videos that you can look at that kind of walk you through some of the lessons. While I don't promote any of the individual videos because they're not created by our district, I know of quite a few.
Just to help us parents.
Exactly. That we share at meetings at the schools and families for, as a resource for them to be able to see what's the process for solving.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Sure.
Anybody else? Mr. Bourgey?
I'm going to struggle through this. If we have all this help, right, is either, there's not as many kids that we'd like taking these courses or this assistance because our scores are still so low. So what are we doing about that? Because if you're telling me and you're nodding your head, yes, we have all this stuff, yet our kids still aren't getting it. If there are review courses, maybe there's not enough, not enough students taking them. And maybe the parents need, you need to bring them all in because these scores are terrible.
That's an excellent point. It's something that the high school will walk through this spring as they're looking for interventions in order to address these exact issues that you're talking about. Let's look at our Mastery Prep class. How many students are assigned to the class? How many students are attending? What is their participation rate? How do we increase that participation rate? How, how many empty seats do we have and why are they empty? Those will all be questions that the high school team will look through while they're doing their, what they call a needs assessment and root cause analysis. So it's a long, it's a lot of conversation, looking at the data and trying to figure out, what is it that's, that's happening that's creating this situation? Because like you said, we have strong supports in place for students to be successful. So let's see what is, what is the issue that their supports are not actually yielding the results that they should?
You drill down, you can drill down into the students' answers. You can see the questions they failed or they couldn't answer. You've got the answer. Those, those areas are not being taught as well as they should be. Because obviously, the next group, if there's similar questions from year to year, we're missing a boat on that battery of questions. Others were doing fine, but there's a whole bunch that were not. That's what's been concerning me for years, sitting on the school committee, that we're not getting there fast enough.
Yes. I would agree with her not getting there fast enough. We are doing exactly what you're talking about, drilling down and looking at individual questions. I will say that for RICAS, looking at the standard and the individual question really helps to instruct the students to learn that concept. The high school SAT, PSAT, as Mr. Burke mentioned, is, there's multiple layers of, do we know the content and do we understand the test-taking strategy? So that's another course that we can look at offering and ensuring that the practice that students are doing in school is, is what is happening.
Any of us who've been in accounting had review courses for the CPA exam. Because the exam is not just what you know.
Correct.
It's how you take the test.
Correct.
That's the most important part. So I would imagine that we should be implementing this full bore to get our kids doing better in these tests, be more encouraging for them.
Correct.
Hopefully, we'll see better scores next year.
That's, that's our goal. Continue moving forward. At this time, I'm going to pass it down to Rania to look at our WEATA access scores.
So the WEATA access is a yearly English language proficiency assessment for multilingual learners that assesses students in listening, speaking, reading, and writing skills in academic contexts in English. The assessment is taken from January to February each year. So once we come back from vacation, we will be starting our assessment. This assessment takes place, this assessment places students in six English language proficiency levels, entering, emerging, developing, expanding, reaching, and bridging. And in order to exit out of English for speakers of other language programming, a multilingual learner needs to score an overall proficiency of 4.8 or higher, which is the higher end of our expanding. So if you look at the first slide for WEATA access, you can see that next to each category level, entering, emerging, there's a number next to it. So entering students score between a 1.0 and a 1.9 and so on. So this first slide shows the proficiency levels for the last three years. So if you look at 2021, 2022, 95.1% of our multilingual learners took the assessment. 30.6%, scored in the entering level. 25.6% scored in our emerging. 30.6% scored in developing. 12.1% scored expanding and 1.1 scored in the bridging and reaching. So we had about 2% of our multilingual learners exit out of programming last school year. The next slide shows a breakdown of our multilingual learners and their years of service. Research shows that it takes five to seven years to become proficient in the English language. So this breaks it down based on the years of service. So our newcomers, we consider zero years or their first experience in English schools to two years. Our developing is three to six years of service. And our long-term L students are who have been in service for seven-plus years. And then we also assess our students on the WEATA alternate access. So these students are students who are in our SID or medically fragile classrooms that do take this assessment. That is about 1% of our multilingual learners who do take this. So each of these levels are a little different. So you can see the A1 is initiating. So that's initiating with the English language and so on. In order to exit out of English language services, if you are taking a WEATA alternate access, you must score a level P2 for two consecutive years. So if you have any questions?
Yes.
Yes, I'll just start with one to, to help the committee here. Tell us what WEATA means.
Yes. So WEATA is the company, so World Class Instructional Design Assessment.
Say it again, World.
World Class Instructional Design Assessment. So that's the company that houses it.
Okay.
And ACCESS stands for Assessing Comprehension and Communication in English State-to-State for English Language Learners.
Jeez.
It's a big, long.
That's awful.
Yeah. So pretty much it's assessing the English language proficiency of our multilingual learners.
And these are non-English speaking students that have come to us.
Yes.
And it's not really a, a test of sorts. It's our attempt to teach them how to speak English. And it could take a year, it could take seven, as you showed us. And they come in at different levels.
Correct.
Would you, would you find that our students that come in, do they take seven years or do we do, are we doing better than that? No, again, it's not a test.
Yep, it's a test. So it depends on the proficiency of the student in their home language. If they have a higher proficiency in their home language, it will take them a shorter time to exit out of services. Another factor is the language difference between English. So if you're coming from an Arabic-speaking country, you need to learn the whole alphabetic system before you can, well, we do it with, like Andrew was saying, through the silo model. So we do provide them with grade-level content, but along with English language development. Because there's a little bit of pieces that they really do need to focus on. So like in Arabic, there's no vowels. So that's a whole different concept. Each symbol has four sounds to it. So it's a little different. So in order to acquire English, it takes a little bit longer.
And one final question before I open it up. And these students, do they sit for the, the RICAS test and the SAT test?
Yes. So if it is their first time in US schools, or in, yeah, in US schools, they do not take the ELA portion. They still have to take the mathematics. So they say that they give them one year to acquire some English before they are assessed on RICAS. So our year-two students will be taking both ELA and math, even though they have not reached proficiency on WEATA access. Correct.
Anyone else want to comment on that? Are those tests put in dual language or strictly in English?
Strictly English. The only accommodation that they can have is the directions put in home language. Mathematics can be put in Spanish. There are no other languages as of right now.
So it takes seven years to become proficient in English, but they make you take the test in two years?
Correct, yes.
Those studies all reflect on our, our scores?
Yes, they are. And last year, for the 21-22, 12% of our population were multilingual learners. We are now up to 14% of our population as multilingual learners.
The school population, correct?
Yes, correct.
Anyone else have a comment? Mrs. Costa?
So if we, so these are obviously, English is their second language. So if we realize that these students are having a little bit more trouble understanding English, how do we go about making those adjustments? Do we focus more one-on-one with that student? Is there more support put in place for that student? How do we go about like recognizing that student's difficulties and working with them?
Yep. It depends on the program. So in our elementary model, the classroom teacher is ESL certified. So they have the knowledge to support the multilingual learners within the classroom. Usually their small group instruction is geared towards English language development, but they do have access to grade-level material. Our middle school model is more of a collaborative model where we have a ESL teacher attached to the team. So that teacher supports a sheltered classroom and another classroom. So they are traveling with the students. And then high school, there's a different program as well.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else have a comment or anything on the score? So just 14% of our students are multilanguage learners right now.
Correct.
Is that, what's the state average?
It depends.
Is there such a?
Sure. It depends on just, yeah, she's going to look at, thank you.
I mean, are we one of the largest numbers in the state?
We are.
You don't have, you don't have to do that. So yeah.
We are one of the largest.
I would expect the state average is much lower. That's.
Does the state allow you to extrapolate those numbers, the English language numbers as a, and leave them out?
Of the RICAS data? I don't believe so.
I don't think so.
That's the problem.
She didn't hear your question, Ms. Holt.
Oh, she answered it.
Okay, while we're.
She answered it, sorry.
Now, who's taking over the, the next portion of this presentation?
So I have the DLM part of it. So the DLM is the Dynamic Learning Map. Sorry, I have the same voice thing going on like everyone else.
What's going on over here?
So a few months back, I had spoken about the 1% on how the students in our severe intellectual disabilities classrooms take the alternate assessment. So these students do not take RICAS at all. So the state tries to have all districts be under the 1%, but like we had discussed before, sometimes it's not possible. Students that need to take the alternate assessment for various reasons, take this assessment. The assessment window is from April to May. And just to recap what our percentages are, during this testing window, our ELA was at 1.83% and our math was at 1.79% of students that were taking the DLM. So roughly, it's about 50 students that we have district-wide that take the test. However, the only students that take the test are in grades three through eight and grades 11 for both math and ELA. And for science, it's only grades five, eight, and 11. So with that said, I gave you the overall district average, not the middle school, elementary, and high school separated. Because it's such a low number of students, I didn't want to be able to identify the students in the classroom in the subsets. So with that said, the first part is the ELA. I gave you the information from year 2018, 2019, all the way down to 21, 22. So and you can notice that in 2018, 2019, we were up to 61 students that had taken the DLM for ELA. In 21, 22, we were down to 49. That is a big dip from previous years due to students going from 11th grade to 12th grade, as well as other students going from 8th grade to 9th grade. So randomly through the years, as the students progress in their grade, grade levels, we'll have a higher percentage of students that take the DLM or we'll have a lower percentage of students, depending on where those students fall. So with that said, last year, we had 12.2% of the students proficient on the DLM. As, and we were a little bit below the state with 21.9%. The next slide with the math, I did the same breakdown. We were at 6.1%. The state was at 19.1%. And then with the science on the next page, we actually went up to 13.6% in the science and then in the state, they had 16.2%. When I did the breakdown per school for myself, I saw that at the high school level, the high school and some areas at the middle school level were very close to the state average, if not above. And when Kelly and myself took a look at why that would be, for the last few years, the high school has been using Unique and News2U as a program, an educational program that they've been using within the classroom to help facilitate their learning. It's their curriculum that they've been using. Last year, we implemented it more at the middle school and purchased it for the elementary. And we are doing trainings all this year to have the elementary, middle schools do the more in-depth training with News2U and Unique to, so that they have a curriculum that they're following. Many times, they were taking the curriculum that we had, that the Gen Ed students were working on and modifying the curriculum as best they could to meet the needs of their students. So I'm hopeful that with the curriculum in place, it'll help support and bring up the numbers in the areas. Also, the state has provided some professional development around the DLM mathematics. I, as a state, the mathematic numbers have gone down in the DLM. So they're trying to provide some feedback to our teachers on how to implement the DLM in math and incorporate it into their IEPs and support them more. So we put that PD out to our teachers. I'm hopeful that some of them will participate and bring some of the knowledge back to our, our teams. Also, two years ago, when Dr. Sullivan was with us, she had got us into the SET program, which is taking the Dynamic Learning Maps and digging deeper and trying to train our teachers better in how to provide support to students and get better at providing academic rigor for them. In February of last year, Kelly Gerard and Maria Colado, my assistant at the middle school, have been working very diligently with the state and coming up with the models to be able to go to each school, work with the principal and the teachers that are teaching the students that are taking the DLM, and making sure that they're providing the supports necessary to dig deeper into the curriculum for them. So we are one of, I believe, five districts within the state that are participating in the SET program. And we are pretty far along with the trainings that have been started. Do you have any questions at this point?
Anybody have any questions? Sounds like a lot of work is being done. So, well done.
And some of the areas, like I said, at the high school, they were at or above the state averages in some of the areas. So, you know, they've been using the curriculum. So it just shows that when they have a curriculum that they're not creating and they're moving forward with it, the test scores will go up and it'll support them.
Good, good.
Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Holt, final comments of your team and your presentation?
Yes, thank you. Rania and I were able to get the statistic that you were looking for. So of the students tested in Rhode Island, 12.8%.
12.8% are identified as MLL students. So we're at 14. And the state of students tested, that was what was released this past week from the commissioner's office, not the total, but of students tested, so 12.8. I'd just like to say thank you for allowing us to share the data. And again, I would love to commend our schools for the progress that they have made, in particular Burnin' and Coleman Exining CSI. Thank you.
Excellent, well done. Thank you all. Very good. At this time now, I will then make a motion to receive and place on file all these presentations. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. The ayes have it. Moving on now to the superintendent's report. He will begin with personal matters update and then an update on the Nonviolent Institute.
Thank you, thank you, Vice Chairman. Excuse me, it's happening to me too. So I'm going to start with Personnel Matters Update. We have added three certified positions since our last school committee meeting. We've also added two non-certified positions. And as you can see, we have many hourly stipend and extracurricular positions that we have added as well across the district. Any questions about the personnel? Before I move on to the nonviolence?
Yep, please.
Great. So I'm very excited. Later in the, on the agenda, we're going to be hopefully approving the MOU between the Windsocket Education Department and the Nonviolence Institute, which will officially begin the work that we're going to embark on with them, with that, with those folks from Providence. So far, we have had meetings, even though we haven't officially signed the MOU, we have had meetings with the executive director and workers from the Nonviolence Institute. We've held meetings with the staff at the high school, where I introduced the members of the Nonviolence Institute, talked a little bit about their role in the school district, specifically at the high school, and to a lesser degree at the middle schools. We also scheduled a meeting recently with parents to let them know, you know, about the work that we'll be doing with the Nonviolence Institute. And soon after we come back from vacation, Mr. Guo is going to be scheduling assemblies, small assemblies with students to introduce the nonviolence folks to them and to talk to our students about nonviolence and, you know, what support they're going to be providing, specifically the high school. So I'm excited that we're finally going to start officially the work and the partnership with them. One of the things that we've added recently as well, which the Nonviolence Institute have been and will continue to be a part of, is we have bi-weekly safety cabinet meetings on Mondays, Monday morning. And that's an opportunity for the principal of the high school, the principals of the middle schools, Gigi DiBello, who was our project aware coordinator, the Nonviolence Institute, and our school resource officers, and on some occasions, Chief Oates. And we talk about things that may have happened in the community the weekend prior to Monday so that our administrators are prepared for any types of violence that might have occurred over the weekend. And also, any events that may have occurred, you know, the previous week or just leading up to that Monday so that our schools are, you know, can be proactive when students come back in on Mondays. So that, we've had about three of those meetings. As I said, we're going to continue those. And they've been very productive so far in trying to get a sense of, you know, what's happening in the community, what's happening in the schools around conflict, the inability to resolve conflict and as well as, you know, just any type of, types of violence that may have occurred in the community. So, you know, we're, again, you know, I can't, you know, stress any greater how thrilled I am to have them coming on board to work with us as we move forward. And I will be presenting to the committee just, you know, updates as to how that partnership and collaboration is going with the Institute throughout the course of the school year.
Well, Dr. McGee, you make a good point that our schools are not isolated units. That things that happen in the community are brought into our schools. And obviously, this group here is able to address or let us know in the schools what's going on outside to help out. And that's a great point.
And we're also going to be partnering with the Health Equity Zone. It's not a part of this MOU with the Nonviolence Institute, but through the Health Equity Zone, which is an organization, there's a health, there are multiple health equity zones across the state. We have one in Rhode Island, in Windsocket. And that's an organization that is, that's associated with Thunder Mist. And they, their goal or their mission is to provide healthy, whether it's mental health or, you know, physical health, nutrition, but opportunities, positive opportunities for the community, which includes naturally our youth. So they're going to be a part of our meetings as well because the, that partnership that we're going to be establishing with them, there will be a community outreach worker who will be working with us at the high school and at the district level, who will sort of have their, you know, their ear to the ground in the community and will be able to, you know, work with us and work with families around the various incidents and issues that stem from the community and, you know, seep into the school and some that start in the school and seep into the community. So that's, that's going to, you know, that's going to be an exciting part of the work as well.
Anyone have any comments, Dr. McGee, about this topic? Then I will make a motion to receive and place on file the superintendent's report. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Dr. Chairman Bujay and Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, the ayes have it. And we are moving on now to our school subcommittee reports. We have three subcommittees. Must have met recently. A CILAC update, a Building Communication Committee update, and a curriculum update. The CILAC update, Mrs. Kepiscus?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. The CILAC met on December 1st. We had a presentation at our meeting. And in the interest of efficacy, since we have a rather long agenda, the presentation was by Katie Conde and Yvonne Sogastumi of Ride, excuse me, Ride Pen, Rhode Island Parent Information Network, who provided information about the services that are available through Ride and in particular, the streamlined access to services that are being provided by students who are referred by the Windsocket School Department. We have staff in each of the school who can access the streamlining process of directing parents to Ride, to, why do I keep saying that? Ride Pen for assistance. Anybody who's interested in that particular presentation, I have minutes from the CILAC meeting that I will share with you. Under Old Business, I reminded everyone that the Council for Secondary Education at Ride had now approved as of November 15th, the new graduation requirements which will impact the class of 2028, the current seventh graders. And there's still no real provision made in these regulations to address students with IEPs or MLL students. I again, address the need as acting chair for us to locate parents who are willing to act in a leadership position for CILAC with the advice and guidance of the current acting chair. Dr. McGee's comments included, again, comments with regard to these graduation requirements that they're designed basically to make students ready for a four-year college and not every student is headed in that direction. But the WED will be meeting with families, beginning with the seventh graders, to advise on the impact of these new regulations. He reminded parents about parent-teacher conferences, which were occurring the following week. Ms. Morel advised about how it would have been another busy month at the Special Education Department, that she was conducting interviews with hopes of filling Open TA positions and the Open LEA position at Polthe, which I believe has now been filled. And with that, the meeting was adjourned at 6:57 PM. That concludes my report, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you, Mrs. Kepiscus.
Nice and short.
Have you seen our agenda? The next meeting, it is, today is January 5th, I think?
Yeah, the 5th, yeah.
At 6:00 PM virtually. If you want the link, send me an email and I'd be happy to share it with you. Right date. Yeah, January 5th.
Yep.
Anybody have any questions? Nope, okay, I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the CILAC update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay. Moving on now to the Building Committee update. Mr. Nodarani, take over.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. So there is no update for the Building Committee this evening. We did not have a recent meeting, but we will be having one at the beginning of January.
Another nice and short one.
All right, let's keep it going.
So disappointed.
Me too, me too. We were looking forward to hearing you talk, Mr. Nodarani.
We need to make a motion?
Nope.
No need for motion. Okay, let's see if something, someone has something to say about the next one. Curriculum update. Ms. Kepiscus and Chairman Bujay.
I figured as much.
It's all you, Ms. Kepiscus.
Well, we'll try to do a little bit longer to make you happy, Mr. Bujay. The curriculum subcommittee met on November 29th at 2:00 PM. After approving minutes, we discussed the readiness-based graduation requirements, the new secondary regs that are being imposed in order to obtain a high school diploma. They do not currently address the needs of IEP and MLL students with different challenges by providing any waivers of these requirements and local requirement by the regulations themselves cannot be less than these new state requirements, but can be more. The new regulations are based around state, local credit requirements, real-world, relevant proficiencies, college and career readiness, and proficiency-based requirements, also known as our portfolio or senior project. The amended regulations were approved by Ride on 11/15 and had removed the mandatory completion of the FFAFA as a diploma requirement. However, the FFAFA is still being strongly encouraged and it's expected that the failure to meet the certain, the failure of a certain percentage of seniors completing the FFAFA may affect the district's STAR report going forward. I did ask the David Tienko at Ride about that. He said he hadn't heard that, but he was going to check into it for me. But he said it wouldn't surprise him. Dr. Holt will be presenting to the full school committee the requirements for approval on a future date as the new requirements must also be approved locally. We talked about the vocational school students who are impacted, particularly with regard to the fourth math credit, which can be a flex credit. And he gave detailed presentation on the programs that are available at the WAC Tech, which could allow students to achieve this flex program credit, this flex credit that they will need in order to meet the 20 credit requirement. There was a long list of the various programs that would be available. I will not bore you with the details. But it does, it is clear that there are many options available for our students to be able to earn the required credits while still attending the vocational program. The next topic is something that's later on our agenda, credit weight for college courses. There have been some students who are taking college-level courses of both the WAC Tech and the high school with either concurrent enrollment or dual enrollment. Our current grading policy does not address this issue, but the handbook provides that students who take honors courses or advanced placement or AP courses are given extra weight in terms of grading in their GPAs. While the handbook is actually silent on the actual weight, the practice has been to provide five bonus points for students in honors classes and 10 bonus points for students in AP classes, which is how, when we're all confused on honors night and senior rewards night, how a student can have 115 when they graduate, that's how they have 115 as an average. Parents of a current student have inquired as to whether additional GPA weight will be given to these college courses in terms of a student's GPA. Most districts treat them, these dual or concurrent college classes as AP classes for weight. The bump up, so to speak, is not dependent on a student passing the proficiency or AP test for the college credit. And the high school would like to treat these college classes as AP classes and give the bump up typically given to students taking AP classes. After much discussion, it was agreed that the way to accomplish this in time for our current seniors is for the full school committee to vote to amend the current high school handbook to include these classes in the extra weight language that is currently provided for in the high school handbook. This amendment will apply retroactively only to the current high school students, classes of 23, 24, 25, and 26. The chair will prepare, that was me, will prepare draft language to be circulated to the full school committee before their next meeting so they can understand what the amendment is that is being proposed. All agree that at some point, the actual weight given for these courses should be reflected in both the district grading policy, which we are reviewing currently, as well as the high school handbook. After this discussion, I discussed with Ms. Blaze, who advised that the school committee doesn't really approve the handbooks any longer. But we did, I did prepare draft language that would be in effect for the class of 2023 going forward, not retroactively. So that any student who took current college dual or concurrent enrollments in prior years cannot come back to us, ask for the bump up to increase their class rank. It's only for students prospectively going forward, as well as the class of 2023. And that's why we're pushing it through tonight so that it can apply to the class of 2023. And that will be on our agenda for later on. Two hours later, we adjourned. And our next meeting, I do not remember when that is. I don't even, I think I scheduled it, but I don't remember when it is, and I apologize.
January 10th, I think.
Ms. Kepiscus, one question about that?
Absolutely.
The college course bump up, that would be like an AP, is that also retroactive to the fall semester?
Of this year.
Of this year.
And only of this year.
It is, okay, okay.
Because as Mr. Guo explained to us, placement and valedictorian, salutatorian are determined based on first semester, which is why we thought it was important to push this through before those first semester grades became final grades so that the bump up could be given to the students who took those courses this semester, fall.
Good to hear, okay. And we'll be voting on that.
We will be voting on that under New Business.
Anybody have any other comments, questions? Okay, do I have to do anything with that? Oh, yes, I do. I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the curriculum update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, wonderful. All right, moving on now to conferences and discussions. We have a financial update by Mr. Perrier. And then we have a special education update by Mrs. Morel. We'll begin with the financial update by Mr. Perrier.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair. In front of the school committee this evening is the October 31st, 2022 Windsocket Education Department General Fund Fiscal Update. Currently, the school department is projecting a $156,000 surplus for the year. On to some financial highlights for that. Revenues at this time are on pace pretty much across the board. Nothing to report there out of the ordinary at the moment. On the expenditure side, all regular salaries are $2.075 million under budget at this time. And when netted with the employee turnover allowance of $1.470 million, this will put the overall salaries $605,000 under budget. Substitute salary line is projected to be $160,000 over budget due to several vacancies spread across the district. Medical expenses are currently $520,000 over budget. For the first quarter of the year, medical expenses have been higher than anything experienced since the beginning of the pandemic. During our next finance subcommittee meeting, we will be scheduled, which will be scheduled in the next few months, we will begin a discussion about possibly using our OPEB funds to begin paying retiring medical expenses down. Again, to reiterate what we talked about last time, medical is high, but the last few months, it has seemed to come down a little bit. So that's a promising, promising thing. Hopefully, we'll continue that trend. Also available is our medical set aside. We have a little over a million dollars there. When we get to the subcommittee, we can discuss and strategize our options for potentially using some of those funds to cover some of these expenses this year. Additional speech therapists, contracted nursing services, personal care attendants, and behavioral interventionists have been needed this year beyond what was originally budgeted. We have begun moving some of these expenses into SRR3 in order to cushion the overall expenses of the general fund, and we'll continue to monitor that going forward. We currently have moved expenses off the general fund at this time for building improvements, furniture, and fixtures of technology-related hardware. These have been transferred to our capital funds. And again, these will be monitored going forward. As I stated earlier, we are currently projecting a $156,000 surplus for the fiscal year at this time. We still do have flexibility under our SRR3 and SRRLEAP grant to deal with any situations that may arise this fiscal year. Even with some of the expenses being over budget at this time in the general fund, we can continue to move forward with confidence for this fiscal year. So, and it's still a little early. We are only through October at this point, but we are on target and we will continue to monitor expenses as we go throughout the fiscal year. So at this time, if the school committee has any questions, I'd love to answer them.
SRR2.
SRR2.
Where do we stand?
SRR2 right now, we.
Chairman Bujay, you would like to speak?
Yes.
Okay. Remember, you go through the acting vice chair right now.
Yes.
Mr. Vice Chair.
You have a flaw. Do you need a translation?
Yes, I do, in English.
SRR2 is pretty much wrapped up at this point. If you look at what we have encumbered throughout the year, we will be moving some of those expenses off, but I believe by June 30th, that grant will be fully expended. So we are doing a, I have to, I have to commend the administrative team here. They really spend money well.
That's your job to control it, isn't it?
Oh, oh, the hammer's about to be dropped. Yeah, yeah. So well, well, the thing is this, though, and all joking aside, the way that these grants are set up, I mean, you have to spend through them. There's no carry forward on this. And if you don't spend the money, then you're look at like, well, why didn't you spend the money? We gave you all this money. Why are you not spending it? So it, it is a difficult balance to ramp up expenditures when you know 18 months from now, we're going to be kind of on the other side of the coin. So it's, it's a difficult balance, but I think we've done a good job. And honestly, I would rather see us step down a little bit going in the next fiscal year as opposed to having to ramp up to meet our expenditure goals and then fall off a cliff the following fiscal year. So I think we're, we're on a good pace. I think, I think things are being spent according to plan. And we're going to keep an eye on expenditures. We're going to have no problem this year. We're going to have a great budget for next year. God help us fiscal year '25. I, I guess that's, that's where we're at right now. So well, there's your, there's your SRR recap.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Perry, Mr. Perry, I do have a couple of questions. I was looking at some of, I guess, the fine print that I hadn't looked at before. And I was looking at tuition that we pay outside the district. Tuition to other schools within the state, $800,000. Tuition to other schools outside the state, $125,000. And here's what got my attention. Tuition to private sources, $6,450,000. On top of that, tuition to charter schools, $1,450,000. Now, the reason why I began to look at that is that I read in the Rhode Island map in the Boston Globe that Rise Prep has put in the proposal, which I'm sure they approved, to expand. And their expansion is going to take 10 years. They're going to begin by expanding to a nine-to-12 high school and then begin a second K-to-eight elementary school. And they're talking a 10-year expansion. Now, what got my attention, though, in this story is that they're going to go from right now 430 students to 1,450 students. Now, we could deal with percentages, and we can say that look at the percentage of public school students, of, of, of students we're going to lose in the public schools. But what got our attention, and it's obviously not something that many of us are going to have to be dealing with in 10 years, our payment for all this is now going to be $15,634,000. Need I say more? Mr. Perry, I did ask you earlier if you could explain, I mean, tuition to private sources, $6 million. And, and I know it's needed. We're not questioning, I'm not questioning. I don't think anybody questioned the need for some of these payments for our students. But, but what are we looking at? That, that, that these numbers show, and also the potential of $15 million in several years.
So what we are looking at here, the Rhode Island Uniform Charter of Accounts does provide a guide for breaking out tuitions paid to other school districts. We can start right at the, right at the top there, 55610, tuition to other school districts within the state. Currently, that was an $800,000 budget. We're currently projected to be $762,000. That line mainly deals with the tuitions that we're paying to other public school districts in relation to CTE expense. So our, our biggest expenses in that line, we, we pay Cumberland and we pay North Smithfield, the biggest majority of, of that right there, and that is directly related to CTE programs that they're running, that our students are attending, that we need to pay. The next line down, 55620, tuition to other school districts outside the state. That's a rarely-used line for us. We did budget $125,000. We currently have no expenses there. But on occasion, there will be a special education student that would go to a, a, a placement that would qualify and fall under that line. 55630, tuition to private sources. Now, this is where the majority of the students on this line are, again, the special, the high-needs special education students at placements like Bradley Hospital, Action-Based Enterprises is one. There's, there's several other placements, the Wolf School, that's, that's another one. That's where the majority of our tuition is paid. And that's where the biggest line is. As you can see, we budgeted 6.4. We're currently projected at 6.1. But yeah, this is just, it, it's just the expense. This is not, these placements are not cheap, as you can see. But they are needed for the school district. 55640, tuition to educational service agencies within the state of Rhode Island. That was $1.3 million budgeted, and we're almost at 1.2 million expenses. The only school that falls under that that we currently pay is the Northern Rhode Island Collaborative. So everything on that line is pointed to them. And then finally, 55660, tuition to charter schools, $1.4 million budgeted, $1.4 million to be paid currently. Those are the charter schools that we pay within the district here. The two, two biggest being Mayoral Academy and Beacon Charter. Those are the, the two heavy hitters here. And then we have a, a small smattering, spattering, excuse me, of tuitions that we pay throughout the state at other charter schools.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Perry, for just providing the information because I, I think people should know, you know, some other factors that affect just us taking care of, you know, school, students within our own schools. And again, many, obviously, this is needed for some of it. But do look, look into the future, though. You know, $15 million that we're going to have to pay to three charter schools, no, five charter schools in the city. Who knows what position we're all going to be in?
Currently, for the Mayoral Academy, they add 40 students every year. The agreement is half the students would come from One Socket, and half the students would come from outside of One Socket. So essentially, the charter school is adding 80 students every year, 40 of them being billed to One Socket, and then 40 being billed to the other districts where the, the students are being sent from. But that's been, we've added 40 students every year for the last seven years. So we started at 40, and now we're at, I think, 320, because we're up to seventh, they're currently up to seventh grade right now. So there'll be one more year, and then that, I think, will be the end of their current, what they currently have on the books with RIDE. And then what happens going forward from there? We don't know.
Anyone else have any comments? Chairman Bojey, with pleasure.
This is where the fair funding formula, it's one of the reasons it needs to be changed because it doesn't recognize all the expenditures we have for special kids who have to go out of district for whatever reason, and we're incurring high costs. In addition, if they don't do any, if the fair funding formula is in change relative to charter schools, I agree with Vice Chair Burke, because I saw the same numbers that a lot of the districts are going to wonder, because you're not, we're not going to have the funds to support this. We're going to lose attendance. We're going to lose funding. And on top of that, we're going to have to pay for the additional students. And this is something possibly, we've got to, we have, we have to sit down with our reps and our senators in our city, in our council. Because if we don't start making noise now, as, as time goes on, we're going to be, we're going to be in a lot of trouble financially. Because unless the state comes in and just pours money at us, that's one thing, but I, it doesn't seem that that's the way it goes. I don't know what you think about that. It's, 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 who knows? But those are, those are really the underpinnings to our future budget. If we don't look at this now, we're going to, it's going to be a real problem. I know people keep saying they're looking at the fair funding formula. Well, they're looking at it, but I haven't heard any real changes yet because it's a political football.
Really, really haven't.
Providence.
Nothing's really been done as far as the fair funding formula since its inception. It's pretty much the
You're on your own.
It's pretty much the same thing that was out of the box when, when they rolled it out.
Right. Thank you.
Anybody else have a comment? Yes, Kepiscus.
The other problem is that right now, the charters were intended to be what magnets are in Providence. Where a particular charter would focus on a particular area, maybe an engineering charter or nursing charter. That's not what charters have become, at least in One Socket, as well as other, as in other districts. They've become a duplicate school system where they don't have to worry about budgeting because they present the bill to the local districts where their students come from, and we get to pay it. And everyone screams that you want to have smaller class sizes in One Socket. We could have smaller class sizes like the charters do if we had an unlimited budget like the charters do. Because the charters decide they're going to have 20 kids in a classroom, and then simply present us with a bill to pay for it. Which is why our students have 30 students in a classroom, because we can't afford that kind of money because we have to divert that kind of money towards charters. Now, I understand the big chunk of that money is for special ed. Guess what? Kids with IEPs are entitled to a free and appropriate public education. And if sitting in a public school classroom is not appropriate for them, we have to find the appropriate setting, and we have to provide it free to them, but it surely is not free to the district. And the problem is, everything I'm reading in the Providence Journal on the state level is saying there are legislators that are agitating to look at the fair funding formula. The leadership has no interest whatsoever. So we really do have to press very hard on the state representatives, not just ours, all of them, to review the state fair funding formula to make it truly fair. Because it is not to districts like One Socket, to districts like Providence that have very costly special needs students. And that number only increases with all of what's left of us, with what's left with us by COVID. Not just physically, but emotionally. Those rise, all those costs. Thank you, Mr. Vice Chair.
Thank you. Great comments. Anybody else? Okay, very good. Motion now, I will make a motion to receive and place on file the financial update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Chairman Bojey. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Now, special education update by Mrs. Morrell.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. So just to piggyback a little bit off of what Mrs. Kepiscus and everyone has been talking about, we've been working very closely with both the middle schools and the high schools to take a look at our behavioral programs and the supports that we have within districts, as well as our SEL program at the middle school to help support the students in district as much as we can before having to do out-of-district placements. Right now, a lot of our out-of-district placements are kind of in the same boat that we're in, where they're not able to take more students on because they are short-staffed themselves. And they are losing staff. A lot of the staff are leaving and coming to the school districts. So we are looking in-house to strengthen our, our behavioral programs and our special ed supports for middle school and high school. And I started conversations with Bradley Hospital of possibly bringing in a elementary component in the year to come. So we're just starting those conversations now. So we're, we're really looking to try to bring things in-house like other districts have done to try and save some of those funds. But it's not easy to do. I did have to close one of my classrooms recently because we didn't have a certified teacher to support those students. And some of those students I did have to place out of district because I just had to support them. But sometimes, you know, the appropriate setting is not the public school. So we're taking a look at every student individually, and Ellie Van Hal, my out-of-district coordinator, who does all my IEPs, has done a tremendous job of bringing students back in that can transition back in to help save funds, but also moving students around to the other placements if they need a different type of placement. With that said, we're also working very closely with the Tides Mobile Response Unit. This program is supplying wraparound services for families to help crisis-related issues to avoid police or hospital interventions for students in pre-K to 12. This is a program that has been around for a while to support the, in a city, schools that have been connected with Project Aware. Gigi DiBello has done a tremendous job with bringing the district to the table with Tides. And the program is funded through the Executive Office of Health and Human Services. So when there's a, a student in need before, if it's a student, we're kind of thinking that they need a little bit more support than what we can provide with the permission of the parent, we can contact Tides Family Services and do wraparound services with them to support them, and they'll help the whole family to try to prevent a hospital stay or anything like that. So that's a new program that we're, we're supporting and connecting with. And we're looking to, in the future, do more connections with them to have some of their Mobile Response Unit staff be implemented within some of our committees within-house. So MOU may be coming to you in the near future. With that said, below are my special education numbers. The last time I presented was in October. The total enrollment is slightly lower by four students. And the total percentage of students that are receiving special education services right now from pre-K to 12 is slightly below. In October, it was 24.7%, whereas now it's 24.5%. Again, those are the students that are in-house, not including our out-of-district numbers. Do you have any questions at this time?
Anybody have any questions or comments? Maybe to help people understand, we're talking every one out of four students have special needs services in the district.
Some of them, it's, so at the younger levels, pre-K to like grade three, it's, many times it's speech articulation or language acquisition, how they're receiving language and how they're expressing their language. So a lot of that is just through the speech pathologist. As they get older, as you see the breakdown in the numbers, typically, the younger students, there are more IEPs in the younger grades due to the speech-only IEPs. Sometimes they grow out of the articulation or the, the lisp that they might have, or they, they strengthen the language skills, and they're, they don't need the services any longer. However, sometimes it more seems to be needing more.
So I'll make a motion, I'll make a motion to receive and place on file the special education update. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Costa. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, we're moving now into unfinished bills, business. And our first item is a discussion and approval on the Out-of-School Instruction for Temporary Disabled Students Policy, second passage. Mrs. Kepiscus and Trulli, I make a motion to discuss and approve the Out-of-School Instruction for Temporary Disabled Students Policy for second passage. Do I have a second? Okay, second by Chairman Bojey. Is there any amendments that anyone like to make, any changes, any, do you have any questions? This is for second passage. We did discuss it at the last meeting. Are we all good? I will make a motion then to ask Dr. McGee for a roll call vote.
Chairman Bojey?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes. Okay, the motion passes. Okay. Now, we're going to discuss the discussion and approval on the medical marijuana policy. Second passage, Mrs. Kepiscus and myself. I would like, I will make the motion to discuss and approve the medical marijuana policy for second passage. Do I have a second? Second by Chairman Bojey. Is there any discussion, any concerns, anybody have any questions? Is this okay? Yes.
I just bring to everyone's attention that when we passed it for first passage in November, there was some language omitted from the Medical Marijuana Administration Policy. And the language that was accidentally omitted was the prohibition against self-administration. And that's now been put back in for the second passage. I asked council whether we had to go back to first passage, and they said that it wasn't a big enough change to require us to go back to first passage. It was language that was originally in there when it came out of policy, which It was language that was originally in there when it came out of policy, which it was just inadvertently omitted. And it was intended to address particularly the 18-year-olds, that the marijuana cannot be administered by themselves, that it has to be administered by a parent, guardian, or parent-appointed representative. And I just wanted to bring that to everyone's attention.
Do we have to vote that in as an amendment? No.
Oh, sorry.
So it's all set to vote for second passage as is. Okay, thank you. Roll call, Dr. McGee.
Chairman Bojei?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes. Okay. Moving on now to the discussion and approval on the memorandum of agreement with the Nonviolence Institute. I'll make a motion, this item had been tabled from the last meeting. So I will make a motion first to remove this item from the table.
Second.
Second by Chairman Bojei. Roll call, Dr. McGee.
Chairman Bojei?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes. Very good. It is untabled. Now I'm going to make a motion to discuss and approve the memorandum of agreement with the Nonviolence Institute. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chairman Bojei. And roll call, no, I'm sorry, now discussion. Dr. McGee.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. So this MOU, which is actually, it's a consulting and training service agreement between the Windsocket Education Department and the Nonviolence Institute. So it's similar to an MOU. Would begin this evening, December 21st, 2022, and it would expire on June 30th, 2023. And we would be looking to continue this work with them from year to year over the next three years. However, this agreement would just be from year to year. Some highlights of this agreement, the services that the Nonviolence Institute will provide the WED, would be to consult with myself or my designee, consulting with the Nonviolence Institute. The executive director would be meeting with myself or designees regularly or as needed. They will also provide one four-hour introductory training for up to 30 Windsocket Education Department employees, including middle and high school administrators, central office administrators, and Windsocket Education Department outreach workers from the HES, which I had discussed with you, I had mentioned earlier. They would also provide one 40-hour training course for up to 15 WED employees, including Windsocket High School Nonviolence Team, which would include administrators, teaching staff, and students. They will also provide any manuals and materials that are necessary in their principles of nonviolence and conflict resolution that they would be working with us on. The compensation would be $19,200 for the year. That money is not locally, is not coming out of our local funds, but it's coming out of our Project Aware funds, grant funds. So it would not be at a cost to the district. I'd like to, you know, answer any questions that the committee may have at this time.
Anybody have any comments, questions? Good.
Chairman Bojei?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes.
It's like the MGM line. It's awful.
Okay. Now, we, have we finished our unfinished business?
Yes.
Okay, now we're in new business. Unbelievable. How many pages is this agenda? All right. You know, I'm going to get blamed for a long meeting, but it's not really my fault. I just sat in here. Okay, new business. There is, there is. Okay, all right, hurry up, I'll talk fast. All right. New business, discussion approval on school committee appointments to subcommittees. Dr. McGee? Or motion to discuss and approve the school, wait a minute.
Second.
Okay, second. Any discussion about it? Did any, we saw that, made their choices? Everybody's comfortable with their, with their choices?
I guess.
You have no choice. You have no choice with your choices. Okay. So, with that being said, Dr. McGee, roll call vote.
Chairman Bojei?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes. Excellent. Moving on now, discussion approval on the amendments to the Durham Bus Company contract. First of all, was this ever tabled? No.
Yes. It was.
No, we just.
It wasn't? I thought it was. I thought we continued it.
Long time ago, long, long time ago. Okay, moving on. Motion to discuss and approve the amendments to the Durham Bus Company contract. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Chairman Bojei. Mr. Nodarani, hope you have something to say this time.
I think he does, Mr. Vice Chair.
He looks shocked.
Would you like me to start?
10 o'clock deadline.
So, at this time, Durham is, Durham's doing everything that they possibly can to get the buses to the schools for arrival and dismissal. At this point, in fairness to Durham, there are some circumstances that are beyond their control. For example, construction on Cass Avenue. We've received an exceptional amount of waivers from our building, from parents requesting of our building principals who've approved waivers for students with special circumstances. And as a result of that, it would be unfair for us to hold Durham accountable for their delays in arrival and dismissal based on those circumstances. I do think it's worth, when we convene in the new year, to have a discussion about several things I think we can do to make things better. But at this point, it wouldn't be fair to continue to say that they, that it's something on their end. Don't get me wrong, Durham's still Durham. But often, I know, Costa, we've talked about at Savoy. Unfortunately, Savoy and Globe Park are at the end of the runs. And oftentimes, each day I get a daily email that I share with the principals and oftentimes, it'll be reflected in the email that they hit construction or severe congestion and traffic at the high school, which has impacted them there. Most recently, we did discover an issue at the middle schools that Ms. Morrell discovered and addressed at the middle schools. But we fixed that and other problems are cropping up. Not as a result of that, but they're cropping up everywhere. So I just don't think it's fair at this point to continue to hold them solely responsible for the delays.
Okay, anybody have any questions? I just have a comment.
Me too.
So they've done a better job, that's good to hear. I saw some Rise Prep students get off a bus run by Valley Transportation Company. Now, does that mean that the charter school sets its own contract, which we probably pay? Is that, is that, because Durham doesn't do the charter schools, does it?
Durham does do some of the charter school runs. Valley does cover for the charter schools. Valley also, from time to time, assists us.
Okay.
It's a cooperative effort. Valley is no longer able to provide full service to us. And talking with Mr. Legari, they don't have the complement of buses nor drivers. Quite frankly, I wish they did. They provide, I think, better service. They're more responsive because they're here in the city, but unfortunately, they don't have the capacity to support us. But what you witnessed is an occurrence that happens. As a matter of fact, as recently as this week, Valley had a van out in front of this school transporting students. So they do from time to time pitch in to help.
They help out, that Rise Prep doesn't have a contract with them that we pay for. We listen to Durham.
Our contract has nothing to do with Rise Prep. Our contract with Durham only covers the school district.
But we pay for their transportation in the charter schools, under whatever contract they have.
Well, we pay them tuition and they take the tuition and potentially pay the transportation bill with the tuition that we pay them.
It's separate, okay, it's on, okay. All right, thank you. I'm asking too much.
Mr. Burke?
Anybody have any other questions? Mrs. Costa?
So I, I don't know, I see you still kind of speaking with hesitation. I know some things are out of their control. But my thing is, is what is us giving them more money going to do for them? It's obviously that they've already put up a competitive wage to try to get drivers in, but us giving them more money, I don't see how that's even going to help them.
So, I'll probably say something else that might, so they enhance their compensation to attract more candidates to fill the positions. And I will say, with the exception of recently where they've had a few staff members out, they have kept a full complement of drivers and monitors on the bus, which has historically been an issue for them. That is an issue across the state. It doesn't appear to be an issue for us up here right now. So, and I'm going to, I'll defer to Mr. Perry in a second here, but I think the idea is, is they enhanced their compensation. And I think Mr. Perry would agree and I'll defer to him. I think we're going to either pay now or when the contract renews, they're going to bid and we're going to pay later. And I think they're still going to be under what some of the competitors are going to charge us. So I think that's where we're at. And I would be remiss, again, to be fair, not that I want to point, but to be fair, when this district, I did look back and research historically, our transportation here in the district, when I was acquainting myself when I took over facilities. And when this district suffered severe financial hardship, you may not be aware, but Durham carried our transportation when we could not afford to compensate them.
Okay.
So I found the memos from Mr. Fontaine, unless that's inaccurate, but I found it in writing. They carried us when we couldn't afford to pay them, I'm sure Dr. McGee probably recalls. And as much as I'd like to say we should not compensate them more for some of the outrageous things I've experienced and witnessed, I think in fairness to the organization, we should consider doing something because they are trying their best to hold up their end of the bargain right now. And if I felt otherwise, similar to the last two times I've spoken up, I would say place it on hold a little longer.
Okay. I appreciate that, thank you.
Welcome. Very good, anything else?
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes.
Not to, you have me thinking with your question about charters. My understanding is, we're responsible to provide busing to any Windsocket student to their school. So that would include Savoy, Vernon, Globe, the Catholic Regional System, which we've always provided. So I would assume that would include charters.
You're correct, Ms. Kepiscus. We do pay for our students to go there. I was a little confused about the question. I thought you were talking about all the students. No, we are in charge of transporting our students to the charter school. We do pay for that, you are correct. And I apologize for misunderstanding the question earlier.
Unacceptable, no, I'm only playing.
Anything else? Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bojei?
Need a motion or something?
Well, no, I'd actually like to talk about the fiscal compensation a little bit before we move forward with this. I would actually like to delay this because, quite frankly, I don't feel the school district is in a position to make a promise at this point. I do hear what everybody's saying and we do want to get some money to Durham, but I don't feel like we're fiscally ready to make that commitment at this point. I would like to wait till a little bit further into the year, when we get a little more, a little more solid with our fiscal projections, before we begin to talk about potentially paying Durham some more money.
What's the total of what we're increasing to Durham? It can't be substantial. I mean, at salaries, it's a couple of dollars an hour, correct? It was already in there, right?
Is that the 143,000?
Yeah, the 143,000. I mean, it's up to you, it's up to, it's up to the committee if you want to move forward with that full amount. That's, that, this was, this was what was proposed by Durham, okay? This is what Durham proposed to us. So, I mean, I think we have a few options here. I mean, I think we can pay the whole amount if you'd like, we can pay a portion of it. We can, and I actually like to pay it out in installments as well. I don't want to pay it all now. I'd like to pay a portion of it now and then pay the rest of the end of the year. So.
But if you're paying a portion now and a portion at the end of the year?
Yeah.
Are we providing, are we, are we accepting their hourly increase?
Well, that's, well, these were all, again, this was all put together by Durham. So this was the ask that Durham put together that was presented to you. So we're at the point now where, you know, do you want to pay the whole thing, the whole ask of Durham? Or how would you like to proceed? If you're ready to proceed and pay the whole thing, we can fiscally afford it. The only thing I would ask is that we pay half now because we're at the halfway mark of the year and then pay the other half in June.
It sounds, I don't know, do we have to make an amendment?
We don't have a motion yet.
We don't have a motion? We have a motion yet at all?
We didn't make a motion.
We have a motion, okay. So we will amend our motion, that we will, we will, we will honor the increase, but we will pay half of it now and half of it at the end of the year.
Second.
All those in favor? Are we in a roll call?
No, we got a roll call.
Roll call for that, for that amendment.
Chairman Bojei? Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes. And on the amendment, I'll make a motion to accept the amendment.
Second, second for the amended motion.
Chairman Bojei?
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke?
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus?
Yes.
Mrs. Costa?
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc?
Yes. Okay. All right? Everybody, okay, super. All right, we move on now. This is interesting. Discussion approval on the superintendent's recommendation for the withdrawal from the Northern Rhode Island Collaborative, NRIC, in accordance with the NRIC's bylaws. Motion to discuss and approve the superintendent's recommendation for the withdrawal I will make. Is there a second? Second by Chairman Bojei. Dr. McGee?
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. So I believe that the committee has received a copy of the Northern Rhode Island Collaborative bylaws. I'm pretty sure everybody has that. So let me sort of give you a little, little history as to, you know, what the collaborative is, what our, our collaboration with them has been and where we are right now. So the Northern Rhode Island Collaborative is an organization. It's a, it's a school that currently is housed in Smithfield. And it is a, it's an alternative school that we send, right now, approximately 17 of our students to, which sort of goes into what Mr. Perier was talking about earlier and that part of that $6 million like, not the $6 million one, it's the other one, the other, the other line item of out of district students. So we have historically been a member of the collaborative. And what that means is there are a number of Northern Rhode Island school districts, we being one of them, who both send students to the collaborative and we also serve on their, on their board. So the actual, the school committees actually play a role in that and superintendents play a role in that. So for, for years, when I assumed, when I became superintendent, I just assumed that the role of going to the collaborative monthly meetings with other, other superintendents and we, you know, discuss the collaborative and it's almost, it was like really a school committee working with the Northern Rhode Island Collaborative. About three years ago, the Cumberland School Department made the decision to remove themselves from the collaborative, so they would not be members of the collaborative. Now, schools that, that are a member of the collaborative, their students that go to the collaborative, that they send there, we receive a reduction in tuition. It's about $4,000 that's reduced per student that is sent there. So Cumberland was the first district that removed themselves from the collaborative because at the time, the collaborative, because their enrollment numbers were not high, they were, they were losing money, so they were in the red. So there was a period of time there where it was sort of touch and go, whether or not they were going to continue to operate or not. Their enrollment increased over the years and they are no longer in the red. However, most recently, districts have been submitting letters to the commissioner and to the collaborative that they are going to be leaving the collaborative. So basically, Windsocket, of about 12 districts that are, that were members of the collaborative, we're the last standing member. Most recently, Foster Gloucester and Pawtucket have submitted their, their letter saying that they're, they're getting out. that they're, they're getting out. They're not getting out officially, however, until the end of the fiscal year. So they're still there. That leaves us alone. Now, so you might say, well, that's okay. We're, we're the only member there. And, and they, the other districts are still sending students there. But as being the only member, if they do end up going, you know, going out of business, so to speak, we, next year, if they go out of business next year, we would be left with the liability, specifically the pension liability of the collaborative.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Right now, if we leave the collaborative, as the, all of the other districts have, I believe in, in Attorney Rapport might be able to speak in a little, a little bit more detail, because I, I think, Sarah, you've spoken to, did you speak to, to, to the collaborative or Ben Scungeo about?
I, I can't comment on what will happen if everyone gets notice that there is no entity as of July 1st. What would happen to the liabilities? I don't have the bylaws in front of me candidly. I haven't studied them with that. The primary reason to give notice now is that the bylaws require six months' lead time. So the deadline is December 31st. The way it looks to me, from the description you've given of all the other districts withdrawing, there's going to be a total withdrawal, and there will be no member as of July 1st. What that means, pension liability, I can't speak to that now. It appeared, from my recollection of the document, that there is a process for winding down and dissolving the entity that would apportion liabilities instead. So my hunch is that they're going to be involved in the distribution process between now and June period, since after June period, there will be no members for the last one. The expectation is that there's going to be a recognition that it's no longer going to exist, and then whatever pension liability, I, I don't know what that amount is. Either, I don't know, it's funded or it isn't funded. I don't know the status of the, I haven't spoken with Mr. Scungeo about that. But there are other collaboratives that need to be wound down and dissolved. The Southern Rhode Island Collaborative, these are creatures of, as well as the bylaws. So it can't help you in the liability.
Should we choose to withdraw? Which, which is my, I strongly recommend that we withdraw from the collaborative. But should we withdraw? It wouldn't officially be until the end of the fiscal year. And the students that we currently have there would continue to be educated there through this school year. I did speak with Mrs. Morell about our students there, and the fact that we need to be proactive this second half of the school year, in terms of finding other placements for them. Because what we don't want to do is, is assume that they're not going to dissolve when, when they're going to. And then we're left with students who, you know, who don't have a placement. So that's a process that we're going to start working on, you know, once the committee, you know, if the committee approves, you know, my, my recommendation moving forward.
Chairman Bourget.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Chairman. You know, legal counsel has to look over the, the bylaws, but my reading of them states that the liabilities of a collaborative will be shared equally by the participating members. So if all the other districts have issued their letter effectively leaving next June, if the collaborative declares bankruptcy within that period, then we are all participants. However, if we are the only participating district after June 30th, then we would be the only participant, and perhaps we would be socked with all the liabilities of the collaborative. So it makes sense for us to issue that letter and get out, because if the collaborative goes down, goes under, at least whatever liabilities there are, we'd be sharing amongst the rest of the other participating districts. That's what makes sense to me to do.
It's not perhaps, Mr. Chairman, that we will own all the liabilities after June 30th.
Right.
I just have one question, and maybe Mrs. Morell can answer it. So our students that are there, we will be able to find placements for them next year if we still need it?
So as I had mentioned earlier in my presentation, we're working with Bradley. Hopefully, we can open up a elementary portion of a behavioral support that some of the students may be able to transition back with a program that we have internally. We don't have a program right now at the elementary level, hence why many of our students have gone out of district. So putting a program in at the elementary level, we would be able to bring in some students back. However, we do have some out-of-district placements, like High Roads, that we pay for 25 slots for, that not all 25 slots are filled right now. So some students will be graduating, some students have moved out of One Socket, and those spots have been open, or they open up over the summer. So there are different options that we could take a look at. Also, the 17 students that are there, they're not just one grade level, they're from K through 12. So it's easier to place some of them throughout. We might be able to bring some back to the middle school program that we have that is strengthening. We might be able to bring back some to the high school level. It's not just one grade level that we'd be bringing them back to, but we would be starting now looking at some of the out-of-district placements for the, the fall of next year to see if we can place them there. I also have started some communications with both High Roads, and I'm going to call some other out-of-district placements, just to kind of put a bug in their ear that this might be coming, that we work closely with.
So there are other opportunities?
There are. I can't say 100% there's going to be a spot for all 17.
Right, right.
But we're going to work hard to make sure that there is a spot for all 17. And they're all going to be educated. So whether we have to bring them back in district and provide supports here and strengthen what we have in district, which, it's twofold. If we bring kids back and we save money, we can take that money and strengthen our programs here. However, sometimes, depending on staffing, if I don't have the staff to put in front of the kids here with the certification, it's kind of twofold. So myself, Kelly, and Maria will be working very diligently over the summer to make sure everyone is placed.
Dr. McGee, just one final point here. You did say that some of the districts that have withdrawn still have students there.
They, they do, so.
So even if we withdraw, and the place stays in business, we still, though we might pay a little bit more, we can still send our students there. Is that a possibility?
That's correct. So for this year, because the, 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 the timetable doesn't, doesn't start until the end of the fiscal year, all of the other districts who have already submitted their letter, their students are still there. So if we submit a letter, our students will stay there. Now, next year, let's say it, you know, continues to operate, we can still send students there, we just wouldn't get the discount that being a member of the collaborative would afford us.
But we remove the liability.
Right. That's correct.
Um, I think Mr. Perrier had something to say.
It was, it was, we're looking at about a $4,000 increase, I believe, in the tuition cost as a non-member versus a member. So that's really the, that's the difference that you'd be looking at. If the collaborative continues going into next year, you're looking at $4,000 or more times 18 students. That's, is that the correct count we got there? 17, I apologize, Ms. Morell.
What's that number?
I'm not good at math, sir.
Really?
You're, you're, you're looking at about, yeah, yeah, 70,000.
Quite the contrary.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Yes, Ms. Kepiscus.
I did look at the bylaws, and the bylaw, section two, provides that if a member withdraws, the withdrawing member is still responsible to make payments to the collaborative for its fair share of the liabilities incurred or increased while a member. So we're still on the hook for anything through June 30th.
Yeah, but not for the whole.
Right. But so is Pawtucket, so is whoever else it might be.
I think.
Then it talks about part B, the liabilities, if the Northern, Northern Non-Collaborative dissolves, all liabilities incurred by the collaborative will be paid by the participating members based on established procedures. I read these bylaws through, there's nothing that defines what participating members are, and, which is why we're going to get sued, but that doesn't mean that the collaborative will necessarily be successful in suing us. On top of which, my big concern is, one of my big concerns, is if they go forward, all of its governance talks about a five-person quorum of participating members, and they're not going to have, they're not going to be able to meet that quorum. They're going to have to change their governance completely, which means that, at that point, they may have to look at the bylaws for liabilities too. So it's really up in the air. And I think the best thing we do to protect ourselves is withdraw now and plan not to participate in the future. I think that's really all we can do.
I agree.
That was me taking my, putting my lawyer hat on, and I'm going to take it off in a minute.
Okay. You love when you put your lawyer hat on.
Any other comments, and we all set? And there is a motion?
I'll make the motion.
Roll call vote, yes.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Ms. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Thank you. Next item, discussion and approval on the group work camps rental requests for the Hamlet Middle School. I'll make the motion to discuss and approve. Chairman Bourget, second. And Dr. McGee?
Chairman Bourget.
We're discussing.
Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, the work camps, oh, sorry.
Is it the same as last year?
It, it is the same.
Same contract, same problem.
Yep, it's the same, it's the same group.
All right, so let's roll call.
No, no chairman.
No discussion.
Have we had a problem with them in prior years ever?
No, we have not.
I don't think so.
Okay. Roll call vote.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. We are now going to move on to discussion and approval on an addendum to the One Socket High School Handbook, specifically to the Honor All Highest Honors and Class Rank section. I'll make a motion to discuss and approve the addendum.
Second.
To the One Socket High School's Handbook, specifically the Honor All Highest Honors and Class Rank section. And second, Mrs. Costa, Ms. Kepiscus, I believe you spoke about this earlier?
Yes, I did. It's simply to provide the bump up in the grade, the 10 bonus points, treating the, any dual enrollment, concurrent enrollment, college classes as an AP class for weight in determining a student's academic average. It affects two sections of the handbook. I provided everybody with a copy of the original language and the copy of the proposed, changed the language, and the proposed changes were provided to Dr. McGee and met his approval. He was also present at the policy meeting when we discussed this. And I do recommend that we approve it.
Any other comments? Okay, Dr. McGee, roll call.
Chairman Bourget.
Yes.
Vice Chair Burke.
Yes.
Mrs. Kepiscus.
Yes.
Mrs. Costa.
Yes.
Mr. Leclerc.
Yes.
Excellent. You've got 15 minutes. All right. Discussion now on approval of an amendment to the Special Education Local Advisory Committee. I'll make a motion to approve. Second.
Second.
Second by Chairman Bourget. Mrs. Kepiscus.
As the acting chair of the C L A C, I was reviewing the bylaws, because I was on the school committee at the time these most recent bylaws were executed, and I was not then the chair. And now I'm back to being acting chair. And it, it, I never realized that the requirements for the chair do not require that the chair has a child in district with an I E P, which doesn't make a whole lot of sense to me. It seems to me that the chair of the C L A C should be a parent or guardian of a child with an I E P. It doesn't make sense for it to just be anybody. So the proposed change is to include that language, and the language is, the chairperson shall be the parent or guardian of a student with an I E P attending a public school in the city of One Socket, which will be under the auspices of the W E D, which means our public schools, not a charter, not a Catholic Regional. If the student of the current chairperson shall graduate or otherwise exit said school, the chairperson may continue to serve in the capacity of acting chair until such time as a suitable replacement has been found and installed, which is the situation I'm in now, which is why I'm currently sitting as the acting chair, even though I no longer have a child in district with an I E P, because a suitable replacement has not stepped up or been volunteered yet. So as a result, I, I do suggest that we adopt this change, that whoever it is coming in will meet that requirement, because it just makes common sense.
Can, can we amend that to make Lynn Kepiscus the permanent chair?
There's this little thing called the 13th Amendment.
I would second that.
Worth a shot.
He's exceeding 20 minutes. He's, uh, cleared out.
Look at Lynn.
I'm going to start throwing mints at you.
So, so Lynn, there's not very many parents that attend our meetings as it is.
No.
And do you know who the next person with a, a person, it would be me?
I know Ms. Morell and Mr. Rice.
I have, I have a kid on the, in the school system with an I E P.
But you and I have the same problem.
We're both on.
We should not be, I should not be liaison and acting chair. You cannot be liaison, you cannot be a school committee member and chair, because there's too much potential for conflict. That's what I was told in the past. I don't know if Will and Corinthy feels differently now, but I was told I should not be acting as chair. But I really have no choice, because there is nobody else. And after 17 years, I'm not going to let this thing fold.
Yeah.
Because of that little technicality, I'll take my chances. But the next person should not be connected to the school committee, because there should be a separate freestanding school committee member who's a liaison, which is also the position I serve. It, it's working for now, because there's not a lot of tremendous conflicts, things are going pretty smoothly, which is why our meetings are not well-attended. That's my position. It's always been my position. When C L A C's not well-attended, it means things are going well. When C L A C's well-attended, it means there's a lot of people with problems that are there complaining.
Yeah.
That's just the general rule. They're trying to find, yes, that's right. They're trying to find, I know they're actively trying to find, and have been actively trying to find, since I was elected to the school committee four years ago, someone to take my place. I had someone briefly. She lasted about six months. And quite frankly, she wouldn't qualify right now, even if she were willing to come back, because she no longer has her child in district.
And that's the thing, if we, if we make that change, it already is hard enough for us to find somebody to do it now, let alone somebody that's going to have a child in the school system.
But why would we want to have somebody acting as chair who knows nothing?
No, you don't.
Of special education.
You don't.
You've got to have somebody who actually, it would be better served to have somebody unlike me, who has a child in district and is going through evaluations and I E Ps, and seeing whether or not they're getting a C L A C brochure, when they have a meeting with an L E A. I don't know any of that, because I no longer have a child in district. My son, in fact, is graduating from C C R I. So he's well out of the district.
See, my daughter's in third grade, and she's going through I E Ps right now, so.
So I think that the district would be better served, that the C L A C would be better served to have a parent of a child with special needs. It just, it just makes more sense, and it's always been that way in my opinion.
It does.
And I can tell you, before me, the parent before me was a parent of a child with an I E P, and she left because her child had a speech-only I E P. And when her daughter entered fourth grade, she lost her speech-only I E P, and she could no longer chair, which is how, although I had, my son had been in school for about three months, I ended up taking over as chair of the C L A C, because I was the only person who got volunteered. And here I still sit.
That's because we love you, Lynn.